Good evening. Good evening, y'all, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The public can attend tonight's meeting in person at the George DeCiero City and County Buildings Council Chambers, located at One DeCombe Drive, or watch live on Channel 8 and through live streaming on Broomfield's website, which is broomfield.org/live. The public may also participate in public comment either in person by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have 3 minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have 2 minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have 1 and 1/2 minutes to speak. If joining us in person, we'll ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Inkle.
Here.
Geserski.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Lindstedt.
Here.
Marsh Holson.
Here.
Schaff.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Everybody's here. Thank you. A quorum is present. Well, everyone, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one edition, one regard, and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to 5 minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to 2 minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Saying none, this agenda is approved. This evening, under petitions and communications, Deborah Jordy, Executive Director of the Scientific and Cultural Funding District, will provide us with an update this evening. Ms. Jordy, would you please step up to the podium for the funding update?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I'd like to make, start off by allowing Suzanne Crawford, our board member from Broomfield, say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see all of you and hi to staff. The first thing that I wanted to say is deep and heartfelt thank you to our cultural council, who works very, very hard reviewing applications from organizations and spends a lot of time on that. Also want to give a big thanks to Cheryl German, who supports them wonderfully and does such a wonderful job. And it is my pleasure to introduce tonight Deborah Jordy, the ED of the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District. You may not be aware, but Deborah had over 30 years of experience in arts and culture before she came to SCFD in 2016, and we were really, really lucky to get her. And it's also my pleasure tonight to introduce Dana Manutwani, who is the Program Officer for Adams, Broomfield, and Denver County, and does an absolutely wonderful job supporting the arts organizations and our cultural council here. So, thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to these two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Suzanne for all her hard work and also acknowledge Megan and Kathleen for their work in Broomfield County. I'm going to start. First off, it's great to be here in person. We really like that. So, I don't know who's doing slides. Next, please. Thank you. So, I'm just going to run through, and if we have time for a few questions, we'd love to hear any questions you might have. SCFD was born out of a horrible depression and recession at the time in the mid-'80s. You know, the state was not doing well, not clearly what we saw with COVID, but not a great time. We were in the metro area kind of a one-trick pony, since we were oil and gas-based. And so economically, things were not in a great position. We diversified our economy, we diversified our art sector, our communities, and it's really contributed to growth. So, there were a group of predominantly trustees from the Tier 1, and those are the five nationally internationally recognized organizations: the Denver Art Museum, the Denver Zoo, the Denver Botanic Gardens, the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, and the Denver Center for the Performing Arts. They came together because, at that time, being Denver-based organizations, there was a line item in the city budget and also some in the state budget just got cut. So trustees came together and said, "We need to do something. We need to make sure that our arts and cultural community is whole." So they looked at the one taxing, cultural tax in the country that was really doing well, and that was St. Louis. To this day, St. Louis has a arts and zoological tax. It only funds five organizations based on the property tax. And I would just say, we fund almost 300 organizations, which is a really extraordinary thing. So, there were many iterations of the bill. There was some infighting, and the legislators said, "Go back arts community and figure this out." So they came back, and in 1987, the bill was signed off on, and the campaign moved forward. In 1988 was the first campaign, the first election of the SCFD, and it was off and running. Next, please. So as you all know, it's one penny, and we call it the happy tax because it's one penny on every $10 sales and use tax purchase that goes to support arts and culture. And as I said, it's pretty remarkable that it's supporting such a wide variety, and Dana will talk a little bit about that, but such a wide variety of organizations and over 300. It also is a testament to what you all do and working with other cities and counties, that there's that sort of cooperation and collaboration that we see amongst regional collaboration as well as the arts community. And we see that large and small organizations collaborating on educational projects or exhibition projects. So that is really unique to this region. I was with the head of the Art Museum Association, and they're doing their national conference here, and they said, "We just don't see this kind of collaboration in other cities and communities." So we're very happy about that. SCFD is a national model. We are the largest cultural tax between St. Louis and San Francisco. And it's, again, a testament to the strength of our economy and to what we all do. Next, please. As you all know, we're seven counties, and we are very happy when Broomfield came in in 2001. You've been, you know, a part of the SCFD, but we really love that. We talk about a lot that the footprint of our district is about the size of Rhode Island and Delaware put together. Next, please. A little bit about the structure. So as you know, we have a Board of Directors. We have seven board members. We have 11 board members. We have seven, one from each of the seven counties. As you know, you all appoint Suzanne
Yeah.
to be on the board. They can, board members can serve up to two, three-year terms, consecutive terms. And then we have four gubernatorial appointees that come from various counties that the governor appoints. And so it's a really great representation of individuals that represent their counties, but they're looking broadly, too, at the strength of the district as well as the needs of the counties that are really, really important. We have a small staff. There are only six of us. So we've got a quarter of it here. So, it's a, no, less than that. So it's a good staff. We have very skilled program officers like Dana that focus on the grant-making aspect with the cultural councils. We're involved in a lot of thought leadership in communities. And I would just say, we're always happy to come and talk to any committee, group of residents, any guests from out of town that are interested in knowing more about how to elevate the arts in your community. I always put that out there. And then, of course, we have the cultural councils. We could not live without the cultural councils. They are the heart and soul of the local funding. Within the tiers, the Tier 3 funding is local control, so it's residents that you all select to be on the cultural council. And I've got to say, they have a heavy lift. They are, they review, they're a really intense grant panel. And we try to do training and work with them to help give them the tools they need to be making the right funding decisions for your county. Next, please. This is a slide from a couple of years ago, but I use it to illustrate just some of the points. So, we work with the Colorado Business Committee for the Arts, who publishes an economic activity study every other year. And these are just some of the high points from 2019. We'll get to the 2020 in a minute, which aren't as rosy, but it's still there. So I think what's so exciting is the number of people that attend culture. 15 million people attended. And you think we have an overall population of 3.2 million. It's a lot of repeat. It's visitors. It's people coming into all of our communities, bringing in new money to your community as well as your residents that are enjoying the facilities. The other piece that I think is so important is the engagement with children. The organizations know the value of arts education and engaging our children in arts activities and helping them to see the value in being, seeing wonder and excitement and joy with what they do. We were proud to say during the last reauthorization in 2016, of our 300 organizations, they, those organizations had been to every school in all of the seven counties, which just again demonstrates the importance of the need the organizations feel for being engaged with the schools. Next, please. So this is not the good news. So, we saw everything across the board drop, economic activity. And activity is the money swirling through the economy. So it's not the new money. It's not the big federal grants or the tourism dollars. Those are in another bucket. Jobs dropped, economic impact dropped, attendance dropped, no big surprise, venues were shuttered. But I've got to say, today, we sent our monthly revenue report to you all. For the May collection, it was over $7 million. Every month this year, we've seen $7 million monthly revenue reports, which is staggering. So, we hold our breath, and we've talked to economists and so many different elected officials, and you know, we're still thinking about what's going on in our economy. But, so this really was a huge downturn, both locally and nationally. But we're proud to say that I think because of residents supporting the tax and spending money during the pandemic, we, and we did three COVID surveys, which is data is from, we only lost four organizations in the entire district. And two were founders who were retiring and had really had very little to do with COVID. Two were very small and just decided, you know, it was time to stop doing it. Because we were very concerned that we were going to see a huge drop in, and shutter doors for good. But I think a lot of that is a tribute, again, to the investment that residents and taxpayers make in SCFD and keeping the organizations going. Next, please. How it works. Do you want to take this one?
Okay.
Greetings, everyone. I apologize. I have a kind of weak voice this evening. So how SCFD works, we are guided by a state statute. And that statute dictates how we organize and work in the SCFD. So we have a system where they have to go through a qualification eligibility, as well as, as Deborah said, there is some county decision-making process, and that goes a lot to the local cultural council. So we're very proud to be working locally, keeping it in the community, because who knows best about your community is residents of Broomfield.
Next slide.
So the nitty-gritty, money is given annually to qualifying organizations. Again, state statute says that we have three different tiers. The tiers are based, we have Tier 1, which is our larger national organizations. This is written state statute that they get a certain percentage. It's a good chunk of money that comes in. The Tier 2, also written state statute, is a little bit different. These, this tier is guided by a, why am I forgetting all of a sudden? Qualifying income and attendance levels. These are more of our regional organizations. We don't quite have one in Broomfield, but I hear one is coming. So, the Tier 3 organizations, these are our local organizations in the counties. There are smaller ones. We have larger ones up to 1.5 million down to organizations with less than $10,000 operating budget. And this is where a lot of the magic happens in the counties, because these are really in the communities and making those connections with your residents. Next slide. So specifically for Broomfield County, I'm going to start at the bottom and kind of go up. In 2019, 228,000 was distributed to 38 organizations. If you go up to 2020, what happened? We had COVID. There was a little drawback, but it wasn't tremendous. And there was $212,000 submitted to 40 organizations. And then in 2021, we had a little bounce back at 275,000 to 34 organizations. Again, it goes to attest the resiliency of the county and making, again, magic happen to bring joy to the residents. Next slide. And now we're all grown up. So in 1989, we first started. We had six counties, who was at Broomfield County. We had 1.8 million population, and now we have 3.2 million population in the district. We had 134 organizations that started. Now we have 300-plus organizations. We've seen some come and go, but nonetheless, we've all been affected by somehow these organizations. And then we had $14 million distributed in 1980. Now, last year, we had $75 million distributed, which is amazing. Next slide. And that completes the presentation. We're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you all so much. This is a wonderful story, and it's good to hear that we only, you know, lost a few. But next, before we speak, is public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Please step up to the podium. I don't see anyone. We'll go over to council comments and questions. Anyone on council? Okay, Councilmember Schaff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, SCFD, for being here tonight. It's always great to hear the updates of what's going on within the region of the funding district. I think that, you know, for all of us, we all have a story to tell when it comes to an organization that we've been affected by positively. And I think that we all have those, and I think that that goes to the power of what SCFD is, is that regardless of what community you go into, there is an organization there that is grassroots, that is working within their community, that is working of their residents and making great things happen. So this is a testament of the SCFD and the resilience of the SCFD, that we can go through a global pandemic and come out just as strong, if not stronger. And I think that we continue to make great strides. So thank you to the work that you all do. I know that our cultural council is going to be up before us later, but thank you to all of you for your hard work as well. So thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
I echo what Councilmember Schaff said. Thank you, guys, so much. Anyone else? Thank you for having us. Thank you for the update. This next item this evening, under petitions and communications, is a proclamation declaring July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City and County of Broomfield. Well, Mr. Schuck and any other staff members, please step up to the podium. And please meet Mayor Protem Geserski there. You need no introduction, but go ahead. This proclamation recognizes the integral, integral, integral role parks, recreation, and senior services play in our community and the commitment these departments have to promote health and wellness, time spent in nature and physical activity. They also provide healthy meals, nutrition services, education, and programming and activities such as youth sports, environmental education, and out-of-school activities for our youth. These efforts increase our community's economic prosperity and keep us resilient. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City and County of Broomfield. Invite, and I invite all residents to reap the benefits that our wonderful parks, recreation, and senior services provide to our community. Next, we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item? Don't see any online. Next are comments and questions from council. Anyone? Well, I'm just, we have the best parks and recreation, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Schuck.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Clay Schuck, Director of Operations. I just want to say thank you for allowing us this opportunity to recognize the Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services staff and the dedication they have to the Broomfield community. So appreciate this.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening and for all the services you provide to our community and keeping us safe and the fundamental role you play in keeping the residents of Broomfield happy and healthy. Thank you, Mr. Schuck, and the whole team. Before we begin our public comment section of the agenda, I'd like to introduce Brian Blam, Community Affairs Representative with United Power. He joins us this evening to present Broomfield with a capital credit check. Mr. Blam, would you please come to the podium for your presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Blam. I'm the Community Affairs Representative for United Power. If you know or may not know, we provide the electric utility service to basically the northeastern portion of Broomfield, the newer portion that's growing up there. Tonight, I have the pleasure, Mark Gabriel, our CEO, joins me, and so I'm going to let him do the presentation this evening. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Good evening. Really appreciate the opportunity to present this check to you, but also talk a little bit about the cooperative difference. We call it the cooperative difference because while we act like a traditional utility in providing electricity, in fact, the folks that we provided to here in Broomfield and the rest of our 900 square mile service territory are our members. And in fact, we are owned by our members and managed by our members. Our 11-member Board of Directors are voted in, and every year, we rotate through several and to make sure that we understand what's happening in the community. It's really important that we have this partnership. And I know just recently, we worked for, worked to get the Green Purchase Agreement for you, for the members of the community that are part of United Power. Also, a year ago, we hit a specific milestone. We're the 31st cooperative in the United States to have more than 100,000 meters. And in fact, part of that is due to the growth right here in Broomfield. And that's very important to us, obviously, as we look out into this new and exciting future. In fact, just as of this month, I believe we're up to 106,000 members. So it's a pretty big, pretty big growth. Now, when we provide the electricity, we try to do it at the lowest possible cost, and in that, always is a little bit of a margin. And the margin this year that was voted by our Board of Directors to distribute out to members was $4.5 million. So what does that mean? The board retired $4.5 million, and the City and County of Broomfield has 80 accounts with us. Since 1997, we've returned more than $140,000 to the City and County. And this year, we're returning a check for $10,640.45. So here's our famous Happy Gilmore check, which we can... Also, I'd like to say that we really appreciate the partnership and working with the City and County. I noticed tonight you've got something on electric vehicles coming up. As an EV driver myself, we certainly welcome that, and that's really the coming revolution for many of us. And to the extent that communities embrace electric vehicles, it's got lots of benefits on everything from load control to obviously changes in our carbon output. So thank you so much. We really appreciate the partnership. And anytime you need to reach out, if you have a problem, call Brian. If you want to talk about something, great, call me. Just teasing. Please feel free to call anytime, but thanks for the partnership. We really appreciate it.
Also do we. Thank you so much for taking public comment on this. If anybody would like to comment on this item, please step up to the podium. All right, then, we're going to go ahead and take a real quick photo. You guys can stay here.
Thanks very much.
And now we'll turn it over to council member comments. Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I'm so glad that the United Power representatives were here this evening. We were just speaking at the ACIS meeting last night about the tremendous asset that our Green Purchase Agreement with United Power presented to us to reach our GHG goals. So I'm so glad they were here to talk about the Green Purchase Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Mr. Gabriel and his team for being here. I've met with them several times. I'm very impressed with his leadership. He really has the owners and the constituents in the community in mind in all that he is doing. He has a very sterling previous leadership reputation nationally, and we're so very blessed to have him here. So even though he's not hearing what I'm saying, I just wanted, maybe someone will whisper in his ear, but Mr. Gabriel is a very fine leader, and I'm very impressed with his work to this day. Thank you very much for the check, too.
Thank you. I know they left quick. Anybody else on council? All right. Well, council's community and event updates are next. I'd like to start by thanking, again, our Broomfield Parks and Recreation staff and the Broomfield Police Department for all of your hard work at the Great American Picnic and the fireworks display last week. It truly takes a village to pull off an event of that magnitude, and you all exceeded expectations. We appreciate all of the hard work, the long hours, and everything you do for the community to have this Fourth of July that we enjoy and will remember. Thank you. And does any other council member have an update this evening? We'll have another one. Okay, you go first. Go ahead, Councilmember Lynn.
I just wanted to acknowledge the work that was involved in the Youth Summer Careers Explorer Program that was promoted through the Workforce Center staff also. And so we appreciate their efforts. I was able to be a part of a speed networking group with young people who were interested in talking about different careers that they were interested in. And I was very impressed with those young people and the way they could foresee the contributions they wanted to make to society. to make to society in the future. So that was a wonderful opportunity for them and us.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just yesterday, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable met, and, you know, big news that came out just before the meeting, or I should say a week before the meeting or so, was Westminster had withdrawn from the Noise Roundtable. A big reason that they did was the lack of action that has been taken, and they felt at this time that they needed to spend their money and time elsewhere. This meeting was very enlightening. We had three community presentations that happened. We were talking about the, kind of from the beginning of the Noise Roundtable conversations, that there is an intersection between the airport and the local communities. And the decisions the airport make, of course, affect the communities, but the decisions that the communities make also come into conflict with the airport and what that looks like. So we had three different presentations. One of them was from Arvada, one of them was from Boulder, and one of them was from Superior. Superior, as we know, has been one of the most impacted communities other than Louisville by the airport and the noise from the airport. The decisions that have been made in Superior, one of them was the Rock Creek Neighborhood. When that neighborhood was built, the airport said, "You should not build this." There were many people that said, "You should not build this." It is going to have major implications from noise from the airport it was built, and those implications and those negative impacts are still being felt. But the other two presentations were somewhat interesting. They're both members of the Roundtable. A big part of the reason that they are is because they are surrounding communities of the Roundtable. But Arvada is one in which they don't have a lot of impacts from the airport. A lot of the flights are flying north through Superior and through Louisville. And so Arvada is not having the same amount of impacts that some of the other communities are. And then Boulder is, of course, overseeing just the unincorporated areas of Boulder County. So they're not necessarily overseeing the cities, and that's where a lot of that growth is happening. So they're not having as much conflict within the unincorporated parts of Boulder County, but the, you know, of course, the cities within Boulder are. And so there were some good conversations. There was trading of information of how the development review process goes for different communities, what types of information is included within those reviews from the airport, how does that airport interface. And I got to say that the airport gave Broomfield a shout out, and they said, "You are the best community that the airport interfaces with in terms of those development conversations." And so that was a great, that was a great kudo for us in that we continue to take their advice. We continue to seek out their counsel in terms of how those land use reviews go. So that was great for us. We will have a meeting this next month, and Broomfield will be presenting our land use. So thank you for staff in advance for your preparation for that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaff. Any other council member update? Well, I'd like to share some wonderful news. It's hot off the press. Our very own council colleague Heidi Henkel is the recipient of the 2022 Heart of Broomfield Angel Award for her refugee resettlement efforts. She started the Broomfield Resettlement Task Force on a mission to help resettle refugees with dignity and equity in Broomfield. She started it as she and her husband were able to get his interpreter Ahmad Siddiqui out of Afghanistan last year. Heidi and the task force volunteers initiated a partnership with the Broomfield Community Foundation to support refugees fleeing violence in Afghanistan and Ukraine. And now they have a fund dedicated to help all refugees coming to Broomfield. This task force serves 42 refugees in Broomfield, and they help them with rent funding, food access, registering for schools, helping them integrate into our world. I mean, it's a big deal to come into a place you've never been, and you don't speak the language. And she's guided them through every step of the process with mentoring, financial planning, access to sports, activities for the kids, immigration paperwork. I mean, it's no end to what it takes to resettle your life, ESL learning, fundraising, and awareness. So this task force has made us very proud, and thank you for walking alongside these families and helping them feel welcome here. We really are honored. All right. So next, we're going to go back to general public comments. If anybody would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, and in particular, Ward five council members, and I thank you for what you're doing in Afghanistan. My wife serves in the United States Army as a trauma surgeon, several tours there, treating children. Wow, what an amazing effort. So thank you for that. But let me get to what I'm really here to talk about. And the segue is kind of nice, given the Parks and Recreation, because the place that I'm going to talk about today is, my name is Ted Wallhouse, by the way. I am located in Anthem Highlands in the new community that's being built there, Anthem Reserve. So you are Fifth Ward council members. You are my Ward representative, so I'm happy to talk to you, too. My wife and I have recently built a home there. The community is not yet complete. There's a lot of building going there. And as much as we tried to do our due diligence on our neighborhood, on June 29, and shortly before that, we were made aware of what I can only describe personally as an industrial tank farm that is going into a location, thus the Parks component of this, which I have found to be probably one of the most beautiful parts of Broomfield on a hilltop with a 360-degree view of all the community. Really amazing views. The due diligence component of this, when we were in the midst of moving during the pandemic, signing contracts during the pandemic, and doing this due diligence, I read through a lot of documents. I know where there are oil wells that are capped and all of these interesting things that you can find in the open space behind our community. Not once during this process that I understand that this big industrial complex was going to be built there. Since that June 29 meeting, I've talked to community members. I have discovered that we were apparently, as new homeowners, supposed to have received an exhibit in our documents that outlined this project, and we did not. And I was unable to uncover this information. And then June 29, it became apparent that this project and the documents that we were supposed to have received, apparently there were agreements with the, between the developer and the city of Broomfield. I know that's not your problem. However, now we have some kind of problem with potentially a breach of contract. Now, keep in mind, as I'm saying these things, I'm in the first minutes of the first quarter of understanding this. I may not have my facts straight. I'm still trying to learn, and I hope the council members and others in the city of Broomfield can help me and our community members understand some of these things. But suffice it to say, there may be some legal battles that we're going to pursue, given that there might have been a breach of contract. And then during the meeting, even if we had seen this exhibit, it's become very clear that the scope, size, and breadth of this project has changed significantly. And the next steps would be going to the Land Use Committee and then to City Council for approval. But the city is continuing to spend a great deal of money, time, and effort on this particular site, and it seems that, given the scope change, that this might be something that would be pushed back into the beginning stages. I have limited time here to talk about all my concerns, but suffice it to say, I have concerns. I hope that there is another community meeting on this effort and that I can find help and resources, and the community that I'm a part of now can help find resources so that we can address this issue. You will be hearing from me again, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from other community members as well. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallhouse. Anyone else want to speak in person?
Hi there. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with the council today, and I will follow Ted on the same topic. So it's a theme. My name is Mark Rude, and I'm a resident of the New Development in Anthem Reserve, which is part of the Anthem Highlands community. I'm here to voice my concerns regarding the new water tank project that Ted alluded to that was recently presented for most of us in the community, which was very evident for the very first time. And after the review was performed, needless to say, we're quite shocked at the size and breadth of such a project. And while some information is publicly disclosed of what is included in that project, it certainly, from a size and scale, is considerably much bigger than what is currently documented. The actual plan presented is larger, and like Ted said, it's more considered as an industrial tank project in a neighborhood that doesn't quite belong, especially with the Parks and Community piece that we just mentioned, talking about the hilltop area, beautiful trails, beautiful area, beautiful open space. All you had to do is be there at the Fourth of July last week to see 360-degree view of all the fireworks. We're talking about this tank farm right smack in the middle of that. Okay. The impact to residents, including those that have not even broken ground yet on their properties, needs to be considered before this project can move forward. And this includes the negative impacts to the project, such as the open space, parks, and trails, which it's widely known for. Partly the allure of what makes this neighborhood so special, and for several of us and some of my neighbors that are here in the audience, that we move there is that it is such a beautiful place to call home. And we have concerns that such a project would take away from that. So really, it begs the question, surely there are alternatives, locations, or things that should be assessed before determining a final outcome? And I encourage the councilmenors to consider these things and investigate further so that we collectively come up with an amicable solution for all stakeholders involved. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rude. Anyone else in person? Well, we do have one person remotely, so we'll go ahead to the caller, Julie Beth. You have three minutes.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor, and even Clay Shuck from Parks and Rec, who I have been in correspondence with this week, for having me tonight. I submitted a comment and a proposal yesterday to meet the deadline for tonight's meeting. And since that time, I will say I have been, Clay Shuck at Parks and Rec and Amy Bolton at Animal Control have been proactive in reaching out to me, as they were copied on this correspondence as well. But just so that you, Mayor, and City Council are in the loop of this correspondence, I will go ahead and read that, that comment and proposal now. "The Broomfield Community Park Pond has long been a sanctuary for the waterfowl and wildlife who have inhabited it, as well as for the community members and pets who are drawn to it for the peaceful natural connection it affords. Many community members who have frequented the park for years have witnessed two disturbing trends within the park this season. These trends speak to an incoming mindset that we as a community need to set clear standards against. The first being aggression by uncontrolled children towards wildlife, particularly the throwing of rocks at and disturbances of the nests. It's important to note that these children are not always without adult supervision. The second being injury and fatal injury to waterfowl by uncontrolled dogs. In many of the incidents involving canine harmful behavior, the dogs are leashed but uncontrolled. Examples include too long of an extendable leash preventing effective management, and owners walking dogs right up to waterfowl nests resulting in harmful interactions between the species. It's worth noting that in these incidents, there is no surprise or remorse on the part of the owners when harm ensues. As these behaviors have escalated throughout this season, it has expanded to include full unleashing of dogs within the park, which a top obvious detriment to the wildlife is also concerning and problematic for those with leashed pets. As Broomfield population expands, it is an issue we need to get on top of now, as its emergence and escalation has been rapid. Human-to-wildlife aggression, detrimental canine encounters, and resulting human-to-human conflict place substantial strain on multiple city resources when shifts like this are left unchecked. I have included proposed signage that unlike generic signage directly targets the trends that have been widely observed this season, while broadly disclosing a standard of intolerance regarding malice towards our parks' wildlife. As you can see from the included graphic, these signs reference the Federal Migratory Bird Act, noting that it is illegal and punishable by law to injure, kill, or cause harm to migratory waterfowl, with not disturbing and keeping adequate distance being essential. Note that precise nature and placement of the signage is important if it is to be at all useful. I do understand that signs are not enough. I'm simultaneously working with Broomfield Library, Greenwood Wildlife Sanctuary, and other stakeholder organizations and agencies on delivering child- and adult humane wildlife programs to foster a multimodal community approach to this issue. But these signs strategically placed within the park is where City Council, or maybe as I've more recently been made aware, Parks and Recreation come into this wider approach. Violence, aggression, and disregard for local laws are doors that we cannot afford to turn a blind eye to in any area of our community. Such behavior left unchecked comes to change the entire signature of a community and its gathering places. Let's ensure that our park remain a place of safety to enjoy for human, canine, and wildlife visitors alike, as it always has been until this season. Thank you so much for your time and consideration in this matter. And Clay Shuck and Amy Bolton, if you happen to be there, Clay, I know you are, thank you also for getting back to me on this matter since the submission of this comment."
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Beth. All right. I lost my spot. I know it's consent. Council's consideration of the consent agenda is next. The clerk will read all of the consent agenda items by title, and there will be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 7A through 7D by title?
7A, Approval of Minutes from June 28, 2022, regular meeting. 7B, Resolution Number 2022-88, authorizing, approving, and granting a non-exclusive easement to DCP Operating Company LP for purposes of a natural gas pipeline to be constructed at the Weld County Biosolids Farm. 7C, Resolution Number 2022-70, authorizing and approving the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District SCFD funding allocations for the 2022-2023 funding cycle. 7D, Resolution Number 2022-89, authorizing and approving the purchase of rooftop units for the Police and Courts Building.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have any comments on these agenda items? Please step up to the podium, announce your name and neighborhood for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Roxy Julal-Luckmore. This has to do with 7C. All I want to do is make a statement here that in the past, we had asked that the different organizations be put out according to whether they're actually in Broomfield or outside of Broomfield. And so with the chart that they have here, or the group that they have here, it shows that we have, minus the city and county of Broomfield, we have nine of them that are actually in Broomfield, and we have 22 that are organizations outside of the Broomfield County. It's too bad that we have that many that have to supply services to our Broomfield County. Maybe we can find more inside our own county. We have a STEM school that's going to be coming up. They have extra things coming, too. There are some other things going on inside the county. Maybe they don't really realize that they could be part of this. I'm going to be putting this out to a couple of people that I know, and maybe we can get more people within our own county to put in for some of this, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. We'll go to council questions and comments. Any council questions? Councilmember Lim?
I have a question on 7B and on 7D. So on 7B, the easement for the natural gas pipeline in the Biosolids Farm in Weld County. So the map on page three shows the 16 pipeline easements that have been granted since 2002. I was concerned, and this is not probably going to be an immediate response, but I just wanted to express concern that, given our current situation that we found ourselves in with a midstream pipeline leakage at 152nd and Zuni, that we, do we have any idea if the midstream pipelines that are on this farm have any oversight from any regulatory authority? I'm looking at staff. There's, here comes Mr. Valdez.
Concern noted. Councilmember Lim, I'm having conversations every other day with the Public Utilities Commission. I can look into this.
Okay, thank you. Question on 7D, the purchase of the rooftop units for the Police and Courts Building. Were there any, or was there, was there any investigation about energy efficiency about energy efficiency that was taken into consideration making this purchase? The only direct comment about why this unit was purchased was that it fits the other equipment that's trained.
We have two deputies here from Public Works. Mr. Justin Munt and Ken Rutt, but Jill, recently married and has the new last name, so we still refer to her as a Champion Jill Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, and staff. We always look at efficiencies in anything that we purchase. The train units are automatically going to be more efficient than what's installed though.
Okay, that that's good to know because certainly we are doing the energy performance contract evaluation to, you know, make things more energy efficient. So that's good to know.
Yeah, of course. We've been part of that contracting as well, and so taking all of that into consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate the team for doing this work. Preventive maintenance is often overlooked, and it ends up costing more in the long run when these kinds of projects are not carried out. So I wanted to just thank the team for staying on top of this kind of thing. Obviously, HVAC is a critical part, increasingly so of our, not just our care for our people, but also the energy efficiency issue that my colleague raised. So with that, I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you. Any other councilmember questions? Councilmember Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is seven C. Thank you to the Arts History and Cultural Council for your work on the FCFD funding recommendations. This is a new name for the committee, the Arts History and Cultural Council. You have also made many changes to the process as well to the FCFD kind of grant season there is. So there's a lot of work that you all are doing, and it's really amazing. And I think that with this is coming a lot of efficiencies and streamlined processes. So I'm curious, as this is a new committee made whole, as well as these new processes, how did that go for you all? Is this working well? Is this, are we going in the right direction? Or do we need to change some things at this point? So I'm curious to kind of learn a little bit more how the process has gone and how the committee work is being done.
Thank you so much, Councilman. My name is Kenny Nguyen. I'm the current chair for the Arts History Cultural Council. And to answer your question, there was a lot to catch up on because two different councils had to basically merge together, and we had, you know, folks who never looked at graphs before. And luckily, I just want to give a huge shout out to our staff who really helped us and guys throughout the entire process. And, you know, we're all volunteers. We're really dedicated to the city and county of Broomfield. So I feel like that was really important for us to really just get engaged because all the work we did was for the City Council of Broomfield. Yeah, and of course, again, we, we huge thanks to SFD as well, their staff. They spoke earlier because they also helped us as well. And we actually went to a SFD chairs and liaisons meeting a few weeks ago. And Broomfield stands out. Our processes are very effective. And luckily, we have, again, amazing staff.
Awesome. Well, thank you to you and the staff for all your hard work. I want to address the the public comment that we heard on this. So could you explain that how the organizations within Broomfield are eligible for the FCFD grant process? And maybe this is a question for FCFD as well, how they are eligible to receive those funds from FCFD? And why not every organization, every arts group can be awarded an FCFD grant award?
Well, specifically speaking for SFD, every county that receives funding, there are guidelines stated by each individual council. And so council determines what home county are are eligible for as well as non-home based organizations. And specifically for Broomfield, you have to be Broomfield based in order to receive general operating support. Those are the larger grants. And then the program base are from organizations not within the county. Those are smaller grants. But it's very apparent that the organizations that apply for program funding are committed to certain residents of Broomfield. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. In order to be eligible to receive funding from SCFD, you have to go through an eligibility to process. You only have to do it once, but once you're deemed eligible, and we go through a very stringent process guided by, again, our state statute. And one of the process that you have to be within the state of Colorado as well as the district, which is one of the four, one of the seven counties.
And a big part of that is, is you have to be a five-one-C three, is that correct? And then you also have to be in existence for at least five years. So with that, that is, that is a pretty high bar to to reach. With the reauthorization, that was something that was increased to that five years. And so there are a few organizations that are getting eligible to get into the FCFD. But there are organizations that continue to form, and there are continued organizations that continue to get strong and build their case for why they should be a part of the FCFD, which is a, which is a great opportunity. Cheryl, could you, or Ms. German, could you talk about the other opportunities that may be out there for non-FCFD eligible organizations?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Schaaf. We have the Arts, Science, and Culture Grant Fund. So it's a smaller amount that is our city funds that is a grant that we're organizations that are not eligible for SCFD within Broomfield can apply for these smaller grants within the city that it goes through the same, similar process, a review process for the council that we do grant out every year. And that process will be beginning later this fall. So you'll see more information soon.
Awesome, thanks. And and I would say that we have a lot of great arts organizations here on Broomfield. Some of those are applying for the ACS grants. Some of those are fiscal sponsee of other organizations that we have here on Broomfield. So there's a lot of great work that we have going on and look forward to seeing what those organizations come up with in the new year for not only for applying for funding, but also their programming that they're doing. Last question I have is, there was one organization that was not eligible for funding. And could you speak to why that organization wasn't eligible for for funding? And perhaps if there was something that we need to to address?
There were actually two organizations that were ineligible. One did not meet the SFC guidelines for the grant. So unfortunately, they applied for something that wasn't being funded. The other one actually applied for the wrong grant. They applied for a GOS instead of a project grant, so they were, again, were ineligible because they applied inappropriately. So it was really technical errors that they were applying incorrectly for the grants. That's why they were ineligible.
Okay, all right. Excellent. Well, thank you for that, and thank you for your work. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other councilmember questions on this? I also want to thank the Arts, the New Arts History and Cultural Council for all of their hard work with distributing these funds. Thank you all so much for your service. All right, Council's consideration of the consent agenda is next. We already did that. We went through that. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for Agenda Items seven A through seven D be approved? Councilmember Leslie?
I approve the resolution and recommend it to the team.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilmember Marshall? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? It's so nice we're all here. We don't have to do roll call. Any opposed? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. There is no business before the Board of Social Services or the Board of Health this evening. The first item and only item under the council business this evening is Council's consideration on first reading of Proposed Ordinance Number two one eight six, amending the Broomfield Municipal Code relating to electric vehicles. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council and the community. Anna Burton Zetti, co-director of Community Development and our planning director, will walk us through this next item. Ms. Burton Zetti?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. So the City Council has established policies and goals that are related to sustainability and have indicated an interest in implementing electric vehicle parking requirements in the past. As new projects have been brought forward over the last couple of years, information is often requested during the public meetings regarding what EV infrastructure has been included with new development proposals. This has also been encouraged early in the development review process, both in pre-application settings with staff and formally during the conceptual reviews as well. Staff is therefore bringing forward an ordinance which would codify these, the EV parking requirements for new development, whether that's residential or non-residential new development. The ordinance as drafted would only provide, apply to developments requiring review and approval or consideration through a site development plan or urban renewal site plan after October first of this year. These proposed standards would not be applicable to any project with a previously approved site plan or that has been previously constructed in Broomfield. If I could have the next slide, please. As I mentioned, staff is currently providing applicants with some guidelines. Those guidelines are shown here. We encourage during pre-application, as well as with our application packets, we provide this EV guiding information for the applicants to provide some framework of what the expectations are as they're bringing a project forward. The guidelines outline parking spaces that the city would request based on the total number of parking spaces, whether it's multifamily or commercial development. These guidelines were developed based on best practices and input from multiple departments. Their purpose, as I mentioned, was to provide a specific measure of the expectation, even though these had not been codified yet. Largely, the new developments have incorporated some level of electric vehicle infrastructure, although rarely directly consistent with the specific guidelines. Next slide, please. The proposed EV charging ordinance provides some definitions within the code on the terminology related to electrical vehicle, electric vehicle parking infrastructure, and the level of charging stations. It establishes the number of spaces and the type of charging level that will be required for the new developments. It would also specify signage, excuse me, be needed for non-single-family spaces to make sure that any users are aware if there are fees related to the use of the EV infrastructure or if there are limitations on the time for use. Next slide, please. The list of definitions includes includes those for EV charger types, which are EV capable, EV ready, and EV installed. EV capable spaces per this ordinance would be an electrical panel capacity and space in the conduit that can accommodate future wiring and installation of a Level Two charger. EV ready spaces per this ordinance would be the electrical panel capacity for the Level Two charger, the conduit, the wiring, and an outlet or a junction box. So EV ready stalls require both the infrastructure and a wired outlet or junction box, but the charging equipment itself is not installed. Finally, the EV installed space requires the improvements for EV ready, but also requires that installation of the actual Level Two charger. So you'll notice all of these requirements relate back to a Level Two charger, although we do provide a definition in the code for clarity that there is such a thing as the Level One charger. But our code does not, or the ordinance itself as drafted is not specific, specifically require or address the requirements for Level One. All are related to Level Two. Next slide, please. This table is representing the ratios included in the ordinance for the EV parking spaces and the type of chargers that would be required for multifamily development. Any new single-family residential would be required to provide one EV ready space per dwelling unit. Multifamily would be based on the amount of total parking provided. As currently drafted, this ordinance requires the developer to prepare twenty percent of the parking for these largest multifamily sites to be capable of having EV chargers in the future. So again, this is just running the conduit and having space in the electrical panel to support that future equipment. The lowest numbers in this table are for EV ready and EV installed spaces at five and four percent respectively. These numbers are largely consistent with the guidelines staff has been providing to developers previously with the most remarkable change in the EV installed. As proposed, the ordinance would require additional installed spaces. Next slide, please. So this table, it's also included in the staff memorandum, includes some examples of EV infrastructure that's been approved with previous residential projects in Broomfield as compared to what the proposed ordinance would have required if it had been in effect at the time of the approval of that project. In many instances, the developments would be required to provide more spaces, as you can see. As note, of note, is that the draft ordinance does apply to a hundred percent affordable projects, and multifamily standards would be applicable to townhome developments since multifamily includes townhomes per the municipal code. Next slide, please. This table is outlining the ordinance requirements for non-residential uses. And again, the percentages are largely in line with the guidelines that staff has been providing to developers. Next slide. This is again, providing that comparison regarding what previous projects have been approved for versus what the proposed ordinance would have required had it been in effect. Next slide, please. The ordinance as drafted, as I mentioned, will only apply to new development and non-res, new residential development and new non-residential development that are subject to a site plan reviewed after October first. Staff included this as a potential effective date to allow developers to, that are proceeding through the process to amend their plans. So there's a little bit of additional lead time. The ordinance requirement is not applicable, as I mentioned previously, to previously approved and constructed development. Further, since this requirement as drafted is listed in Title seventeen of the Municipal Code, it would be possible for an applicant to request a variance from these requirements as part of their site development plan or urban renewal site plan at the time of review by the City Council or the Land Use Review Commission. It should be noted that this ordinance allows for private property owners to limit use of the EV infrastructure or to charge fees, but it doesn't specifically go into detail regarding what those fees are or to place, or to place parameters about the limitations. For example, it's not the intent of this ordinance to require private property owners to allow public use of EV charging stations on private property. It's intended for patrons, employees, or visitors. It's also not the intent to allow businesses or to require businesses to allow free charging unless that was their choice to do so. As noted in the memo, there are costs associated with this ordinance. There would be costs borne by the developer, which could be the city and county of Broomfield for any future municipal projects. And these costs will likely be passed down to the end customer, which could be a tenant or a homebuyer. Very rough cost estimates were provided by staff in the staff memorandum. Cost estimates are really difficult for us because it depends on a lot of different factors. It depends on the scale of the installation, the availability of supplies, the costs of the labor. Per our estimation, based on available information that we had, we estimated a new EV installation with the charging facility would be around fifteen thousand dollars. That's more in addition to the parking space itself. EV ready infrastructure would be costing anywhere between fifteen hundred and forty-five hundred per space. To get these numbers, we used a number of sources and some estimation. The broad estimation is challenging because of all the variables I mentioned. The California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project was utilized. It found that for Level Two chargers, the total cost can vary considerably between twenty-seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per charger, just illustrating the difficulty of us trying to estimate. Our estimate, estimate of fifteen thousand was based partially on that California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project, which had an average within its study and also on our experience installing a Level Two charger at the Health and Human Services Building. We did not provide a cost for retrofits because this ordinance was not specifically requiring retrofits at existing businesses. But it has been brought up in many of the public comments that one of the reasons to install at the time of new construction is that the cost is is significantly lowered versus retrofits. This is because there's not the additional fees associated with deconstruction and reconstruction. It also doesn't include the need to retrofit existing electrical panels. Based on the research cited by the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, the cost savings is between around $2,000 to around $4,635 per space if equipment is installed with new construction rather than retrofit. Similar cost savings were estimated by Denver, and it's also referenced in the SWEAP study as this cost savings of around $2,200 per space for EV capable and about $5,000 per space for EV ready charging spaces versus new construction. Next slide, please. Public outreach for the ordinance has begun, and comments received are viewable both on Brimfield Voice as well as on the correspondence link in the memo. Public comments received to date are summarized very generally on this slide. We have a number of comments. I think there were 35-ish that have been on the Brimfield Voice as well as the emails, so this is a very general list. But there was some support for the ordinance as well as some concerns raised and some suggested modifications. Next slide, please. On June 13th of this year, the planning staff did provide the Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability, ACEs, with an overview of this draft regulation. During the presentation, staff answered questions, and after the discussion and review, ACEs voted unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance. As part of the review and comment process, staff posted the draft ordinance on Brimfield Voice, collaborated with sustainability staff to promote it on their website, and it's also been posted on social media. Additional outreach included contacting developers, contractors, architects, utility service providers, including Excel and United Power, and consultants, and inviting them to review and provide input on the ordinance as well. Information about the draft ordinance will also be included in the sustainability newsletter. Comments, as I mentioned, have been included with City Council, and it's anticipated that the proposed ordinance can be one of many steps. We have already been working with developers to encourage EV infrastructure through the guidelines. This is a next step to require EV infrastructure for new development. Any additional changes to the building code to require EV infrastructure at existing or modified sites would be done through a completely different process. And then just for those in the audience who may be listening, council this evening with first reading of the ordinance is determining whether to move forward with this ordinance, in which case a public hearing will be established, or a council could decide not to move forward or to ask staff to bring back changes. Just to clarify that a vote for the ordinance this evening is to establish the scheduled public hearing, and it's not a final determination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burtonzetti. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have comments on this agenda item? Please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretem and Council. My name is John E. Walt, and I live in the Pinnacle North subdivision. I wrote an email on this topic earlier, and to summarize that, I am in favor of this ordinance in spirit. One thing I didn't mention was that I think non-residential development needs to be split into categories based on the traffic type. Take a grocery store, for example. Almost every visit to that lot is going to be for less than an hour of time, except for the employees of the grocery store. And Level 2 charging does not make sense for short-duration charging, so all the EV spaces at the grocery store will be dedicated to the employees of that grocery store. In the memo, it shows an example of a development with 135 parking spaces, and that would require 40, almost 40 EV charging spots to be allocated, five fully installed, seven EV ready, and 27 EV capable. I doubt there's 40 employees at a grocery store on any given day. An office park where people are at the lot for a long period of time, then it makes sense to have Level 2 EV charging and future spaces for EV charging. So I would like to see this addressed by taking the intended use of the parking spaces into account and not simply basing it off the number of parking spots in the complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewald. Is there any other public comments in person? I don't see any online either. So next is council questions. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, also for your comments. Something to consider, certainly. There are five reasons that I support this concept. First of all, for transparency purposes, I drive a Tesla, so I am one of those who have pursued this new type of vehicle. The first reason is health. We don't often think about energy issues around health, although it was inferred earlier. I was reading this morning an article about the terrible ozone crisis that we're in here across the whole Front Range, and the primary causes of those ozone factors are the oil and gas drilling and automobiles. And so the suggestion from at least this author was that the more electric vehicles, then the greater the opportunity we have to get control over this ozone problem that we have here. That's number one. Number two, there's been suggestions that this will add cost to the homeowner or the renter, perhaps so, but on the other hand, it'll provide savings. When I had to install our power line for me to hook up my charger, I spent about $3,000 to do that, and that came out of pocket. So that cost would not be there generally then for those who would purchase or rent in one of these new homes or apartments. And so there's actually a savings to consider. Number three, the ordinance is based on expertise from the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, so there's a model that's being used based on their experience across six states. And so there's a scientific foundation for the numbers that were selected. But again, I think the possibility of maybe some reconsideration makes some sense here. But there are minimal requirements. In most cases, we're talking about just a few spots that would require some kind of electrification preparation or actual stations. It's not, we talked about the large 100-plus, and that's 20%, but for the rest of them, we're talking about three to five spaces or something of that nature. So this is not an overwhelming demand upon the developer to do everything to make sure that every parking spot was electrified. Fourth, the transition to electric vehicles is an advancing part of our society now. This will help, I think, encourage that, which again, based on the health issues and the energy issues that I refer to, I think is a very positive step, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And then fifth, most of the developers who come before us responding to our queries, because we're always asking, how many EV stations are you going to make them ready for the potential owner or leasor, and the answer is typically yes. We may say, why are you choosing a particular number? And we may not like that number, but usually they're giving us a response based on their own experience and other developments. So this is a good thing for the developers and for us because it sets forth what those numbers should be. So we'll spend less time saying, well, I think it should be four rather than three or whatever we're doing, and I think that makes a lot of sense for everybody. So for those five reasons, I think this makes a lot of sense. I think because we're still in the preliminary stages, there is room for further consideration. But I think the more we're able to promote the development and expansion of EVs across our community, the healthier this community is going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Leslie. Councilmember Marsh Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that I support this for exactly the same reasons that Councilmember Leslie just said. I also drive an EV. It's not a Tesla, it's a Hyundai Kona, but I have experience with trying to find chargers, and it's definitely something that is needed. I'm also looking at installing a Level 2 charger in my garage, and that's going to cost me a given amount of money. So having it done upfront, I think, is a good financial impact for everybody. I have a couple of questions for staff. On the limitations that we're not putting in place right now, when I park my car at a charging station, there's usually a sign that says it's illegal or there'll be a fine if a non-EV car parks there. Is that state or federal law?
I believe that's in the state statutes. It's a $150 fine.
So there's not something we would need to mirror? It's already done?
That particular requirement, you're correct. Councilmember is in the state statutes, but if they were to place limitations on who could utilize or the timeframe for the utilization, that would be something that they would need to administer or identify whether there were consequences for doing so on-site.
As far as cost, I know the difference between the ready and the installed. Do we believe that developers will be able to partner with the ChargePoint or Electrify America to offset the costs of the actual installation?
Great question. Councilmember Marsh Holschen, when we have new applicants coming in and we're making comments, we do alert developers early in the process if we know of any grants that might be an opportunity or to get them in touch with organizations that there might be an opportunity for some cost sharing or to bring costs down. We do try to identify that early in the process for them.
Because the ones that we have here at the HHS and Paul Derr, those are ChargePoint brand. So did that company help offset the cost because they make money off those charging stations?
I don't have that information, but we can have that at the second reading.
And then one other question, not question, kind of comment, goes to actually Mr. Ewald's point, and that I hadn't actually thought about. You know, I went down to IKEA and done a Centennial and charged my car at their Level 2 charger, and it was nominal at best for the hour or whatever I was in there. So I know we're looking only at Level 2s at the moment. Are we looking at all Level 3s for having any requirements for that? I know, like, for example, the Walmart 136 or Flatiron Mall, both have Level 3 chargers, which are much quicker charging ports.
It isn't included in the draft ordinance as proposed, and we haven't included it in our general guidelines. Staff has made recommendations where we thought it might be appropriate, like at future gas stations. There have been comments about whether they'd be able to incorporate some fast charging, and we'll continue to make recommendations outside of the code. But again, it's not specifically a requirement in the draft ordinance as it's presented this evening.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem.
Thank you, Mayor. Overall, I am in favor of this and the intent, but I do have a couple small questions and maybe comments. First one, you didn't mention that these proposed ordinances went out to all the stakeholders, developers, and home builders. I didn't really look into the backend of this, but did we receive any comments that were interesting to note?
I think the most specific comment that we received was from a representative of McQuinney, who provided a comment asking there be a consideration to allow townhome developments to be considered more like single-family, which would then require an EV ready space in each single-family attached garage space, rather than requiring some of them to have more of a variety of the levels, so some ready, some installed, some capable. They thought that was more appropriate, and if you look at the table in the packet, the Finley, which was one of their recent townhome developments, is EV ready one per garage. And so they asked that council consider that as part of the changes. We also did hear from Excel and United Power with no comments at this time, but we've asked them to forward it to specifically their EV groups to get additional feedback, and we'll have that hopefully for the public hearing portion of this consideration.
So McQuinney was the one real builder that responded to this?
Yes.
Okay, and the point that you brought up actually was something that caught my attention when you were going through the slides, and that's a good segue. I was curious, is there a way to make it, I guess, sort of treat the townhomes differently than apartments? Because it does seem to me that that does make sense. I understand the purpose of this is for multifamily homes where an apartment renter doesn't have the ability to really make a change to the unit. This is requiring this to be available for the renters. But in a townhome situation where someone actually owns the unit, it really could be up to them whether or not they want to use and spend the extra money for an EV charging station. So I think that the comment from McQuinney does make sense, and I would fully support making that distinction if we could do so.
To Mayor Pretem, I think the way that we would or could do that is through a proposed amendment. Before the second reading, we could work with you, if directed, to work on some language about how that could be considered as an amendment at the time of the second reading.
Thank you. Beyond that, the comments by Mr. Ewald regarding the retail versus office, I think that makes sense to me as well. Certainly, office buildings have folks that are parking there for the full day, and it makes sense to have the EV available to them, but the retail, as was mentioned, may not be as used. I would also support some sort of a distinction between those two if that was possible.
That could be accomplished similarly through, we could look at some amendment language for consideration by council. I would also say each project, as it comes through, would have the opportunity to ask for a variance at the time of consideration if the use really isn't compatible, a high turnover of customers, without that, for whatever reason, at the time of site development plan approval, the council could consider that.
Yeah, I think that's great to have some flexibility. But if we had some sort of distinction in the code, I guess my gut, as we're talking right now, is that it does provide some form of guarantee, I guess, to a developer if they know, some certainty, I think is a better word. So I think there's benefit to having something in the code versus, you know, having the variance process. So beyond that, the only other question I just wanted to, I guess, just make sure, when we're requiring these EV stations, particularly in parking lots, this is not in addition to what's already being required in parking. It's not creating additional parking, right? This is just taking the spaces of traditional parking spaces.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted just to talk about the cost issue, and I thank you for expanding on my question about the $15,000 figure because I couldn't replicate it in my massive research that I did. But I was having trouble understanding that cost because $15,000 would be pretty much the same equal to the cost of all the electrical work in a new home. If a $350,000 home, that's about much you would expend. So it's hard to understand how a charging station would equal all the electrical work in a house. So I'm, and I just wanted to note that the figures I saw were more in line with the Councilmember Leslie's experience of 3,000 to add electrical charge. So I just wanted to note, before I get to my question, that the average, you may not know this, more research, the average person uses 562 gallons of gas a year. So at the present price of gas, Councilmember Leslie would save his $3,000 in a year. So I think we need to take that into consideration that, yes, there's an upfront cost to the electrical charger, but there is usually a very quick savings on not having to buy gas. I did have a question in terms of, for the builders who would be asked to do this, are there tax incentives and other financing made available through the federal program that's encouraging EV charging station installation that they might be able to make?
Councilmember Cohen, there are opportunities. I'm not sure if I'm the best person to speak to all of the opportunities, you know, that might be available federally or state would depend on what type of installation I'm sure that they're doing. Like I mentioned previously, we do try to share that information early with the development community to make sure that they're aware of, based on what type of project they're doing, what may be available to them, and we'll continue to do that as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Okay, thank you for this presentation, and I appreciate Councilmember Leslie's five reasons. That was most of the comments I was going to make. So I did have a question after Councilmember Marsh Holschen asked about the state law for the parking in the EV stations. Is that enforceable on private property? How does that work on private property if there, do we have any details on that?
I believe so. We confirm that with the police department. Ms. Hammer is nodding her head. We did confirm that with the police department.
Okay, that would be great, and I also want to say that I do support those two amendments that our Mayor Pretem discussed, that I brought up the townhome amendment for one, per garage, and the different levels for retail versus office. I look forward to those coming back. And I also want to note that I'm also an EV driver, and I would have benefited greatly by having 220 in my garage. That's quite a considerable cost to add that after the fact. So for all those concerns that people brought up where this is costing so much money, I hope we really do see that benefit, like, we can have people see that benefit of how much money this is actually going to save as we make this transition to EV vehicles. And that is, I think, all my comments. Oh, there was also a question that Mr. Ewald brought up in the email about the minimum service requirement and the amperage, like the amps. About the minimum service requirement requirement in the Ambridge, like the amps, is that something that's already considered in there?
Yes, it is. Councilmember Anderson, we include both as part of the definition for the level two charger. And the requirements for each of the EV ready, capable and installed.
And then actually I have one more question. This one I brought up in the ACES meeting, but do the. For example, with the. With the multifamily ones, there's twenty percent have to be EV. EV capable and then there's EV install and EV ready, which is the, which is the one which is the conduit label, but like the ones twenty percent, ones four percent and ones nine percent or five percent. Is that, does the twenty percent count towards the four percent and the five percent? So is it twenty nine percent upfront or twenty percent? I think we need to clarify.
They are on addition to each other. So you'd be required to have twenty percent that are capable. Five, I believe it's four, five percent that are ready and four percent that are installed. I'm hoping I got those percentages in the correct order.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is going to be in regards to the multifamily, specifically apartments. Cause we've had some developments come forward where. A particular unit in that apartment will have more of like an attached garage per se. Would we be able to change the ordinance, I guess, so it's more in line with what Mayor Protem Dzerzky. Proposed for the townhomes where if they do a dedicated unit. Or dedicated garage for that unit, that that would be required to follow the one to one ratio instead of within that. Twenty first, twenty five or whatever percentage.
That could be possible, Councilmember Ward. They would also be able to do. There's percentages, of course, for each, and they're required to do. For example, the capable at twenty percent. If they chose to, they could do twenty five percent at ready and do all of their garage spaces, for example. You can go up, you just can't go down, and they could propose that as part of their development. But if council did want to get to the specificity that if there is an individual garage unit, not a parking garage, but an individual garage unit. That there was a desire to have it be EV ready or EV capable. We we could probably work on some language to try and get at that.
Okay, thank you. My next question is going to be regarding level three DC fast charging. Why, again, wasn't this really proposed as part of the the ordinance? Cause I feel like level three fast charging is most appropriate for. Particularly like grocery stores and. Chins, etc., where you're there for a short period of time. But also having a mixture within like office units because there are some offices, like medical offices, where you're only visiting for a short period of time if you're a patient. Although office workers are obviously there for a longer period of time. Why wasn't that factored in?
So one of the main reasons is cost. And so that was not included in this draft ordinance. But we really see this as a series of implementations, just like we've been doing the guidelines. This is kind of the first step into EV charging. And adding fast chargers as could be included in this draft ordinance as an amendment. Or it could come forward at a separate amendment where those specifically the fast chargers may be appropriate to be required within Brimfield.
Okay, thank you. Oh, my next question, I think this is my last one. I know you said you base the percentages of capable, ready and installed off of what the Southwest Energy. Sweep, as they're known, did with research. Do you know kind of their methodologies, how they came to those decisions? I try, I would have done more research, but unfortunately I was out of the country with. Cell reception.
I'm sorry, I don't know the background specifically for sweep.
I just wasn't sure, so I thought I'd ask. That's all my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lim.
Um, yes, there was a question that Mr. Ewald had in his email about that I had the opportunity to ask. Ms. Hammer last night, and I just wanted him to hear the answer. So if. If the developer decided to. Not follow the spirit of the ordinance and and just decommission. The EV installations, would there be any recourse for the tenants of a multifamily unit?
So just like any site development plan requirement, it does go back to our code compliance group. We would be largely compliance or complaint based in that regard. Because we wouldn't be monitoring these stations for accessibility and reliability, whether they're working. But if someone was finding that electrical vehicle charging stations that are required per the site development plan are not operational. They could submit a complaint to the code compliance division who could investigate and determine whether there was. Something that could be worked out with the applicant to get that back online.
Okay, that's great. I mean, that this is, this was the goal of the ACES committee. To be focused on equity. So and certainly the, you know, the focus was on. You know, getting rid of barriers. For those who reside in the multifamily units. So and to give them the opportunity to consider purchase of the EV vehicles if they have the charging capabilities. So that's good to know that they would have a recourse to go to code and code compliance if if it weren't necessary. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to staff and and ACES Committee for your research and work on this ordinance. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into preparing this ordinance, I'm sure. There was a lot of conversations with experts that know this information and this and this world a lot better than I do. So. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. This didn't come up about overnight. And there, you know, just thank you for your work on this ordinance. You know, the the EV and capable and the EV ready makes a lot of sense, and I think that there's a broad amount of agreement. I think that there is sticker shock with the EV installed spaces and what this means for residential and non-residential developments. However, at the same point, we're we're rapidly moving through this paradigm shift of what transportation is, how we get from place to place. We're going through a rapid change for how electricity is generated, stored and managed. EVs will not only play a significant role in our transportation, but and how transportation is powered, but also in how electricity is stored and managed. So a lot of these pieces start to go into what this paradigm shift means. It doesn't just mean that I have my car. And that is my means of transportation and I have my home, which is my means of 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 shelter. But those two things start to come together and those start, those two things start to play into one another. And it's the EV technology that starts to make all of this possible. And there's some great presentations out there about, you know, the the new F one fifty s storing power for a house and and using that power overnight. To power all of the appliances, light bulbs and things like that. So this, this is a whole new gener-, you know, a paradigm shift in what we're having. I wanted to thank Councilmember Leslie for bringing up that public health impacts. Of this ordinance and what this is going to do for our ozone levels here in the front range. Staff has had conversations with developers and and one thing that these developers are asking for is clarity and certainty. As those development decisions are going to be started for themselves and 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 going. This ordinance seems to be not only clarifying the expectation of what's. What we are are asking developers to do here on Brimfield. But that's kind of in line with what we're doing with other things such as parking, landscaping. Public land dedication, water taffies, all of these things are are providing that certainty and upfront knowledge for our developers. So I think that this ordinance falls in line of other aspects that we're doing and providing that certainty and clarity for our developer community. This also provides for a variance process as well. And which is just like any other variance, it provides that opportunity for conversation. To, I guess, look at adjustments that might need to be made based on a specific use. So I appreciate that that's included. I noticed I have two minutes left, so I want to wanted to highlight one thing that I did find. There was a Clean Technica survey completed in two thousand and one from owners and managers apartment complexes and other multifamily residential properties. To understand how they're approaching the topic of electrical vehicle charging, what they're getting out of it and the hurdles they're facing. This survey shows that nearly half of the respondents indicated that tenants are increasingly asking for in EV charging ask access. Almost the same amount said that they were interested in having EV charging stations on their properties because they noticed an increase in EVs on the roads where they live. So these are the things that are starting to drive these conversations and they're looking for how and why they need to do this. And they're seeing that response out there. Much smaller particip-, much smaller percentages indicated that laws are starting to require it, only twelve percent. And that they wanted to increase dwell time so that people would spend more money at commercial properties at the location, only ten percent. So so there was more of kind of this awareness that this is where the community is going. And, you know, what we're seeing is that by twenty thirty, we're seeing a a major shift in terms of transportation and the vehicles on the road. And so our 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 owners and managers apartment complexes and other multifamily residential properties are seeing this expansion as well. And so they're going to continue to make those investments. What what continued engagement will, would we expect from staff as well as the ACES committee? In terms of outreach to our non-residential as well as our residential developers based on this ordinance?
So if city council, Councilmember Schaff, if if city council decides to move forward with the ordinance this evening and schedule the public hearing. There will, of course, be the public hearing with the second reading of the ordinance, so an opportunity to again speak in front of city council and share comments. We will update the Brimfield Voice with a link to the meeting here for the video. We'll continue to do outreach with social media with our communications team. And we'll follow up, as I mentioned previously, with United Power and Excel to make sure that their specific EV groups. Are getting comments back to us before it gets back to you all for a second reading.
Okay, thanks. And I have one more question. So in that same Clean Technica survey. Regarding the obstacles to installing EV charging stations, the top two obstacles were the hassle of getting them installed and that they and that they. And that a chunk of money, you know, was required for this and that they don't offer a a clear return on investment. And so, you know, with those two pieces, with this ordinance, are 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 we? I guess, are we putting any requirements on them or mandates on them regarding that return investment? Or is that something that they can go ahead and do and come up with on their own?
Councilmember Schaff, I'm not sure I follow the question.
So in terms of return on investment, so they're making an investment in this charging station. This is different than, say, like a park or a public land dedication. Where there is no return on their investment. They can charge for this service as the owners of that property. And do we have any requirements on whether or not they can do that or what types of return on investment they could they could have?
Thank you for the clarification. So that is one of the limitations that we identified and tried to summarize a little bit is that. We do allow for in the ordinance a fee to be collected, but we don't put a parameter on that. So. Theoretically, someone could charge a fee as well as charge for the electric use to help return. Some portion of their their investment over time.
Okay, so when we're talking about housing costs or development costs, there is a return on this type of an investment that they're making.
Potentially for, not for a a home that is privately sold to an individual necessarily. And again, it would be dependent on then the the end user. So. How those who are managing the facility are utilizing the EV chargers. But certainly not in the case of a single family home, or if it's amended, the townhomes that are owned individually. Those would be sold, the cost would likely be passed along to those homeowners. And then it would be their choice whether to utilize that additional infrastructure that was included.
Excellent. Well, I look forward to supporting this on first reading tonight and the continued conversations. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaff, if I may, two additional points. One, you're absolutely right on on on. Providing the level of expectation and not having the goalpost move. I mean, all of us are, our entire team has been through the last eighteen months. Of having to ask those questions repeatedly. So a lot of those that. Are accustomed to developing in Brimfield or in our neighboring communities that are looking at, this is, this is not going to be. It's not going to come as a a holy cow moment, right? Because all of the developers. That have come before you all in the last eighteen months, we've asked the same thing. So now we're we're codifying it. Mr. Romine and I were 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 talking today about the, you know, a lot of the the email responses where market should drive this. And and quite frankly, from from our from our conversation, the market is driving it. So part of the second part on that on the ROI is. Being able to, without having control over what that ROI looks like. Oftentimes, I mean, ten years ago, who knew what the, you know, a smartphone was, right? So these are gradual things that occur, and then when it does occur, it's swift. It goes absolutely. Crazy. So from the ROI, our ROI perspective, it'll be fascinating to see. What the level of permitting continues to be in Brimfield when this ordinance is passed. Is in fact, there a gap? From those, from from. From those costs that are in fact going to be passed through. Again, from the, I was with the developer this morning. And part of the conversation that I was having with him was whether council mandates it or not. If they get someone that comes and says, I want twenty five EV charging stations, they're going to develop. Twenty five EV charging stations, right? So essentially, it's that sweet spot between the market driving it, which in fact it is. Particularly with the the business community that we're trying to attract in Brimfield on the front end, they are conscientious of this type of. You know, the the Sims Technology Park, part of our marketing component is having those corporate citizens. That this is not something new to them. So again, from the ROI, it's going to be difficult for us to quantify on the back end, but certainly we can. Will have those those tracking mechanisms to be able to say, what is influencing? The consistent drive or that that component of that reduction, is it in fact influencing what those choices are?
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Second round, Councilmember Marshall, two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions. Do we know what the cost of a level three charger is for installation?
I can find that pretty quick.
Okay, and then in conjunction with that, kind of like my earlier questions, when I go to fly, if I go see a movie in Flatiron. I'm using their level three chargers to charge my car because it charges my car while I'm in the movie. I'm paying money to that particular company that runs that charger. Do we know how much, and can we find out how much of the cost is paid for by the developer who installs that and how much is paid for? Possibly by the company, does the company that runs those chargers, do they pay for some of that installation cost? I guess is the question. When we're fat, when we're trying to factor in what the actual cost to developer is of mandating something.
So I'll answer the second question first. The cost, as we've been analyzing it, is the cost at the time of installation for the developer. We assume that cost is then passed down to the end user who then has to make a decision whether to charge a fee to. Recoup some of the additional costs that they are paying for the installation. And I don't think I'm getting to your question based on your expressions.
No, so what I mean is, for example, the level three chargers at at Flatiron are run by a company Electrify America. So if Flatiron decides to put in a level three charger, do they have to pay the entire cost of installing it or does that company offset some of that?
Thank you for the clarification. I did not get that originally, sorry. I don't know how those deals are typically structured. We can research and see how those are typically structured. I know Flatter recently submitted a request and I'll just throw this out there, they're having to install chargers after the fact or. There, they were estimating around seventeen thousand per charger just for the installation and the wiring, the electrical. So not including necessarily the pavement, the landscape changes, any of that. So just to give a retrofit, a specific example.
Do we know if those seventeen thousand were the level threes?
Do not believe these were level threes, but I do have the information. This is. Information that was a similar source from where we got the fifteen thousand. The same source referenced a hundred and three thousand as the average installation. For for the fast charging equipment. That includes thirty seven thousand for the equipment. And sixty six thousand on average for the installation costs.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question, kind of to customer rewards point. So if apartment complex, for example, has dedicated, if they have. Apartments with with garages built in. Is there a concern that they? is there a concern that they will put all of their EV charging to those units because they can charge a premium for those and leave the remaining renters who will park on the lots with no ability to charge? And is there some way we can address that in, or for example, for example, the Will Run Apartment Complex down, you know, in Ward One, they have bays of parking lot of garages that you, that the renters play a premium for, but they also have surface parking too. So I guess the question is, how could we ensure that there's access for everybody?
That's a great question and something we'll need to watch for as we review the site development plans. With this ordinance impacting site development plans and urban renewal site plans specifically, we do see exactly where the installations are occurring as well as the ready spaces are being designated. So through that review, we can ensure that the, they're appropriate dispersed throughout the site.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other council member questions? Okay, next is council's consideration and proposed ordinance number 2186 on first reading. Will the clerk please read proposed ordinance number 2186 by title?
11A ordinance number 2186, amending certain sections of Title 17 of the Broomfield Municipal Code related to electric vehicle charging infrastructure and establishing electric vehicle parking requirements, first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Leslie?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion. I'd like to consider Mayor Protem's recommendations be included in that.
This would not be the time for that.
Okay.
This is a first reading, so it's the time to introduce amendments.
Okay, so I move the resolution as presented then.
Yes. Is that correct? Yeah, amendments on the dais would have to be two third majority and it's, yeah, I know. But you have lots of time since I think the second reading is in August. So you get your ducks in a row, get those to our planning and legal department. So we'll, we'll have that. And may I have a second? Councilmember Lim?
Second, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Even though we discussed, Councilmember Lindstedt.
Thank you, Mayor. I saved my comments for the, the comment phase of the reading. Um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank staff and ACES for their stakeholder work on this, on this ordinance. I think it's, it's very in line, as City Manager Hoffman said, with the, with the market. And it gives developers stability and allows for them to, to come here without having surprises from us. And in terms of the developments we've been seeing lately, it really isn't, you know, they're, they're usually right around this anyways on what they're, they're, they're bringing up. They've been listening to the guidelines, bringing them forward. So I think it's, it's right in line with, with the market. So it's a lot cheaper to, to run conduit before you have to tear up concrete work and, and affect walls and everything else. So I think this is a pretty considerate plan for the future, you know? Council and the, the, the city require, we already prescribe numbers of parking spaces, we require lots of things. So I just think this is very in line with the market and where the, the future of transportation is going. And that said, second reading is coming up. So if you have technical amendments or thoughts on this that you think could make this, this ordinance better, please bring them forward. But I do think staff and, and ACES did really good work stakeholding with, with our development community and with Excel and United. So thank you for, for everyone's work. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, I also want to thank my council for the very thoughtful comments and our, our community as well. Just really read the memos so you're not being told something's happening that's really not. And the scare tactics that this is the big, you know, scary mandate. That's not really what it is. This is moving into a new direction of making these things capable of having charging stations, the majority of them. It's not, we're not mandating charging stations everywhere. So just check your facts. Do we vote? Oh, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Hammer and Ms. Burton Zetti.
Mayor Claudia, did we have a motion in a second? I might have missed it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, that's okay.
All good. Thank you.
Thanks for checking. The city and county attorneys report is next. Ms. Rogers, do you have a report?
Ju- just to follow up on that, the rules require, I think, only like 24 hours notice on amendments. But on a topic like this, and actually this would apply for marijuana that's coming down the pipe too, a week is really ideal for staff, if not more. So the sooner, as soon as you can get your, even your amendment concept to staff, then we can work on that language, the better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Does any member of council have any comments or questions on that? Right, next is the city and county manager report, Ms. Hoffman.
Abby and my partner is sitting in the back. Going to do an interpretive dance as he comes down to the podium, which we're all pretty excited about. Devin, he believes in arts and culture. There you go. Mr. Davis.
I love it.
We are really, we are really excited. And, and I know I speak for Abby, but just personally, it feels like this completes our package that we have been working so hard on for the last, well, I didn't, I didn't really have a chance to breathe for the first year and a half, but certainly for the last year and a half. It is, it's something that I'm eager to, to really embrace it. And, and I, I consider Dawn a friend. And certainly somebody that is not only going to add value in the long run, but, but immediately. And I like to say that I'm a, I'm a, I'm an eight pretty consistently, eight and a half on a good day. And Dawn is an eight and a half consistently. And I'm really happy to have him at the table. Mr. Davis, now that you've had that intro, my friend.
I'm Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, council, our city county manager Hoffman. And Ms. Yelman, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'll do my best to live up to the hype. I really appreciate the kind words. A special shout out to Abby and the team. You did a fantastic job of welcoming me to the family. I definitely feel like a part of the team and a part of the family right now. And so I really appreciate that. I also shout out to, he's not here anymore, but Clay and the team. They gave me a fantastic tour of the community center and, and what a testament to the quality and the capability of the Broomfield staff and team. I mean, I've been in government for a long time, both at the national level and at the local level. And for you to put together a place like the community center, that's so amazing. And, you know, less than six years is just nothing short of amazing. But to see the team and to meet the team, everybody's been incredible and I'm really looking forward to the challenge. And like I said, I will commit myself to doing my best to live up to the.
Oh, it's, oh, it's not hype.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, the only, so I am, I'm going to be out next week on a super exciting bug laden, hot trip that staff is teasing me about. I think I was telling Councilmember Hinkle and Councilmember Ward how excited I am. So.
In the south?
I, Branson, Missouri.
Okay.
Family reunion for my husband. So 106 degrees yesterday with 86, 86 percentage of humidity. Ton of fun coming my way. We have another, every council meeting is, as you know, building upon the next. I'm, I'm heartsick and I, I'm going to be, I'm going to join virtually on Tuesday just because the culmination, when we're now talking about the, the utility, the rate study as well as the, the fee conversation that we again have been working on for 18 months. So again, this is building to the recommendations as we walk into the fourth quarter of 2023, 2022. So it's a, it's, it's a big one next week. So Abby will have the helm and she will, she will have Dawn here to just to have somebody to be sitting here with her helping. So.
Make sure he does more than just sit there.
Yeah. So we're, we've, we've teased him a little bit. That we've, I think, I think Councilmember Lindstedt, and I've talked about this before, but you know, you, for those employees that are at a high level and, and those that you want to be deeply integrated, we're teasing him that we're red shirting him for at least four months. So the only thing that he truly needs to focus on is becoming deeply engaged and enriched with who we are as a community before, really throwing him in, looking for any kind of outcome. So he can really understand what the culture looks like, so we can all run together. So we are pretty, we're pretty excited about that. And with that, Jen, sorry, real quick, in a very weird turn of events, I'm actually out next week too. It's my family vacation as well. So Pat will be acting city and county attorney. I, I will be on the Jersey Shore though, so my son and son will be maybe a little bit less buggy.
Did you have to say that?
Well, that's it, Jen. I think we're done. Well, good. I hope you guys have wonderful breaks and will be in excellent hands, I have no doubt. There is no legislative update or any business before the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority or the Arista Local Improvement District Board of Directors this evening, and there are no special reports. The next item of business for council's consideration this evening are two requests from Councilmember Ward for future action. The first one is regarding council rules for study sessions and the allocation of time for discussion among council members. And before I ask Councilmember Ward to provide a brief summary of the request, I want to remind council that this is not a discussion on the topic and instead the opportunity for council to provide staff direction on whether or not council desires to, for staff to dedicate time and resources to this request. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor, for my first one. This one is just in regards to the study sessions and making it less, I guess, formal and more of a conversation between us as council members. I personally feel that sometimes up here for study sessions, we're a little too rigid and we don't maybe always get to the meat or substance of what we're needing to discuss in those particular meetings. So I just want to look at maybe updating some of our rules to better allow that timeframe. And then, do you want me to just go into the second one?
Let's see. I have to do public comments and all that stuff. Yeah, okay. So before, first we'll have public comments on this. Anybody? No? Okay. Then questions from council are next, but we're not really doing questions. And we kind of talked about this in the coordination meeting that, you know, are we going to have a study session to talk about the study sessions? No. But if we want to, you know, have just an informal conversation at dinner about what we can do to make it more conversational, increase the dialogue, you know, make it more intimate on things that aren't of great public interest, like, like seriously this. So I think, is anybody opposed to us having that conversation to increase the? Yeah, you're not opposed, right? I mean, we can, we can discuss and you're opposed? Go ahead. No.
Yeah, just want to clarify. So, you know, are we talking about putting this on a study session to talk about study sessions? Is that, I mean, is that when you say a discussion, is that what you're, you're alluding to?
See, I don't see this having to be a formal dedicated study session. I think it's a conversation that we can all have informally.
Yeah, I, I, I would be opposed to having staff spend allocation of time and resources on a conversation about a study session. And so I, I think that this is one of those that there, there needs to be more conversation amongst individual council members amongst a small group of people to talk about how we converse with one another. I mean, this, this isn't necessarily public business, this is much more of how we do public business. And this is that relationship building that should happen outside of council meetings. So I think that, you know, this is one of those that unless there's some formal, you know, requests that come out of this, I, I do not think that we should have a formal conversation and staff should not spend time or resources on this conversation.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'll echo what Councilmember Chef said. I've already, I've had some informal discussions with Councilmember Ward and other colleagues at CML a few weeks ago, and I know myself and the mayor have discussed this as well today. So I think there's something that we can informally discuss as, as colleagues. And I think some changes are going to be forthcoming here fairly soon.
All right, Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, just as a clarification, this was not, when I thought of this, it was not meant for staff really, because this is really just council rules. And we as council get to update our rules as we see kind of fit for what I've been, what I've been told. This was just the most formal method for me to introduce it to the rest of you. And this is what I was told to do. So it was not meant for staff to dedicate time for us. It's just letting you know.
We, we just have limited mechanisms for bringing things forward to the, the whole council. So this is the only way to do it. But usually it is for something that we would allow, you know, further research on. So this is something we can convene on our own and, and figure out what the next path forward is.
And Mayor, if I could add something, because Councilmember Ward and I had talked about this. If it did come to the point where it was a change in the five minute requirement or the two minute requirement, that is a change to your council rules and that does require a resolution. So there, there could be some formal action to take place in the future. So, but, but I'll, I'll be included in these conversations. We talked about it, talk about it, coordination. And I'll raise that if it comes up to that point. So thank you, Councilmember Ward.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. The second and final item of business for council's consideration is Councilmember Ward's request for future action regarding minimum wage in Broomfield. Remember this, we're not going to discuss the merits, but if we want to provide staff direction on whether or not council desires staff to dedicate time and resources to this request, Councilmember Ward.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this is just to kind of determine if the minimum wage that we currently use, which is the state's minimum wage requirements, are effective enough at doing exactly what minimum wage is supposed to do, give people really a living wage. And I don't think personally that following the state's guidelines for our particular situation is doing that job. And I also want to address the issue of wage, I'll call it wage discrimination between tipped workers and non-tipped workers.
All right, thank you. So this would be a study session discussing local minimum wage. There you thumbs up?
Mayor, if I may, from, from a, an internal perspective, it, it sounds like Councilmember Ward wants to talk about throughout city and county of Broomfield, which, yes, we'll wait for that. But, but from a staff perspective, if, if, if council will recall, we had the three-year approach. And, and last year was the market study. So we had the Fair Equity Pay Act that we shored up. Council was generous enough to not only do the market increases, but merit on top of that. 2023 is the second year, which is discussing again, or, or reiterating rather, that Broomfield is a pay for performance. So again, there's a lot of conversation about compression. And we are, that, that approach council will see that on our, on our upcoming budget amendments for the personnel piece. And then the third year, just for council, or I'm sorry, for, for the employees, third year was when we're going to talk about the minimum wage Broomfield, Broomfield employee specific. So just so there's clarification about mandating outside of the municipality. And I, and I think we'll see some pretty seismic shifts already just because of the, the changes in order to stay staffed on those lower paid positions. So if, so we don't. we don't have positions that are under fifteen dollars. We have one section. So those are the ones that we'll be looking at, which is from the program facility perspective. But again, minimum wage and living wage, two very different, two very, very different conversations. So I just wanted council to know that internally, we already have that on our path. And in the, in the last eighteen months, we've had to increase simply because of the, the flow of things. So again, the ninety-eight percent of our folks, probably ninety-nine percent, quite frankly, after Abby's quick that was me, that was not the, we have a, we were, we're good on the AV stuff. We've already shored that up. So happy to continue that on the third year, but it sounds like the conversation is bigger to the city and county of Broomfield on the minimum wage.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, this is more Director, Manager Hoffman, thank you for that clarification with, within the city, but this is more directed for private businesses.
So, Councilmember Chef?
Thank you, Mayor. So this local minimum wage is, is what the conversation is. And this is one of those topics that the state has provided, or basically kicked down to the local municipalities to deal with. This is an area in which the state said, you all can come up with your own local minimum wages, which is, would be a higher level, I assume, than the state minimum wage. And so this is one of those areas in which conversations are starting to happen. You all have pointed me to the Boulder Consortium of Cities. This is a conversation in which we have started to have, is concerning the local minimum wage. There are only so, so many regions around the state that can have a local minimum wage. Not every municipality, not every county can have this, and they really are limited. So the idea is that it would be more of a region. And so Boulder, Boulder Consortium of Cities is a great opportunity to have this conversation in terms of a lot of municipalities and starting to collect that data and what this looks like. That doesn't mean that this is going to go through. This doesn't mean that it's, it's going to advance, but this is a conversation that needs to, to be had and, and information to be gathered. So there are, you know, members that are gathering that information and will continue to do this. So I just wanted to let council know and the public know that there are conversations about this that have, that have begun, and those are continuing.
Okay, so do you think that we should have a study session?
I think with a lot of these regional conversations that we have, to get this in the queue, is a, is a good thing. I just wanted to say that this is going to be a much bigger conversation than just the city and county of Broomfield. But in terms of timing for this study session, it may be far enough in advance that a lot of those other regional conversations will continue in the interim. So I don't know what the timing of this looks like, if it's going to be, you know, fall, or if this is going to be much more looking towards winter, spring.
What do you think?
I love the sound of winter or spring.
Especially given your upcoming trip to the bug-infested place.
I am going to regale you all while I'm flailing the mosquitoes and the fun in the sun.
All right, so in favor of scheduling this for a future study session, thumbs up? We have enough. Let's go. Let's do it. Well, then, that's that. This concludes the items on this evening's agenda. Is there any other business to come before the council? There being no further business, this council meeting is adjourned. Good night, Broomfield.